All right, good evening. I'll call the meeting to order for April 5, 2016, UD3 School Board Meeting. And let's begin, as we always do, with introductions around the table. And we'll start at this end as a change.
I'm Nick Bochamp, student representative.
I'm Tali Huskog. I'm a student representative as well.
Kathy Deeman, high school assistant principal.
Bill Lawson, high school principal.
Patrick Green, middle school principal.
Scott Sevo, middle school assistant principal.
Mark Parent, board member from Middlebury.
Peter Covlin from Cornwall.
Peter Burrows, superintendent.
Allison Stanger from Middlebury.
Nick Close from Shoreham.
Jerry Shedd, Ripton.
Rick Scott, Ripport.
Lorraine Morris, Middlebury.
Steve Orzek, Middlebury. Please. Please. We have no public here to comment on anything. I fully expected Leonard to show up, as he actually awaits us approving a policy later on the agenda.
He may be here.
All right. Well, let's see. We've got two sets of minutes to approve. Welcome to motion, muddling them together. All right, moves we approve the minutes from the March 15 and March 28 meetings. It is second.
Second.
Thank you, Mark, for seconding. Anybody want to make any changes in them? All right. All those in favor of approving those said minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? If you can't abstain, if they're not important. Cool. Nick will be abstaining.
Actually, it says minutes Peter Orzek rather than Steve Orzek. Peter is my son.
So you wouldn't do a fine job.
Us Peters, we can spread the wealth.
Just a reminder, these microphones are sensitive, so if you're going to pour water or have side conversations, do it well away from the microphones. All right. Who's got bills? Lorraine does. Lay 'em on us.
I'm sorry?
Lay 'em on us.
Oh, okay. Mark and I actually read minutes today. Thank you, Mark. And I would move we approve the following sums for food service: $27,343.48. And general fund: $1,412,926.77. That's it.
All right. So, Mark is seconding. All those in favor of approving those bills as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody abstaining? All right. We were emailed reports from both principals. Are there any questions, any further discussion, anything to add?
Yeah, I'd like to add, there was a part of my report that reported on the MUHS Scholars Bowl team and that they recently were the state runners-up in state competition, but that enabled them to win a trophy, the Meddler Cup, and as a result, they qualified to go to the Nationals. And so, in collaboration with the local teachers' association, we are able to fund them, five students and an advisor to go to Chicago to compete in the Nationals. So, I think that, you know, we all often hear a lot about our, the prowess of our athletic teams, which is well-deserved, but here's an example of our academic team doing really well in a statewide competition and moving on to a national competition, so those kids will get an experience of seeing kids from all across the nation and competing against them.
Thanks. Any questions on the written reports that we received? No. Thank you very much. All right. So, Mr. Superintendent, you've got the next items.
All right. Thank you. So legislative update, still not a lot happening. Kind of one thing that I wanted to mention, the passage of H853, which is the ed bill, finance bill coming out of the House, which was approved. As we were building budgets, we were talking about the yield. So this year, the way that we're computing our tax rate changed, and we were talking about a yield. We started at about $9,900. It went down to $9,800 or so when we finalized our budgets. It's now down at $9,701. So that's the final number that the House has approved. What that means is that the calculations we made, and this happens every year, as the legislature toys with that number, as they wait for budgets to come in, they anticipate how much all of us across Vermont are going to spend, and they try to get that number exactly where it needs to be to raise enough revenue to fund all of our schools. Our tax rate calculations will probably be slightly higher now that they dropped that yield down. So as that yield number goes down, the tax impact increases, so that the savings that we saw will be a little bit less probably than what, or will be a little bit less than what we had projected with the rate that we had when we went through the budget process. But not significantly. There are sections of this bill which I think are interesting in that it requires any new mandates that will have some sort of financial impact on school districts to go through a couple checks and balances before being approved. As you know, over the last five years or so, there's been a lot of legislation that's happened unchecked. Sounds like a great idea, let's push this through. The next week, you look in the paper and it's passed, and all of a sudden, schools have to come up with millions of dollars to make sure that these bills can be enacted at the ground level. So, that was, I think, helpful. The lobbying groups of really the AOE, the VSA and VSBA work together in Montpelier and are pushing to make sure that not a lot of new legislation is coming down without giving us time to get our feet on the ground with Act 77, with our work on Act 46, and all the other work that we're doing that's really come, I think, fairly recently, when you look at the activity at the legislative level. So there's an understanding in Vermont that we need to slow down and we need to do what we do and do it well, instead of trying to legislate every change that you want to see happen, which just creates more confusion. So that was positive in terms of what's coming out of Montpelier. Nothing else really significant. I'll probably have more to talk about towards the end of the session, but that's kind of what I wanted to share on legislative update. Any questions on that? No? Okay. So, the VIHI plan, I sent information out, I think a few communiques ago, on the new plan and comparisons of the new VIHI plan to what we currently have. This is something we've been talking about for two years now. It's been doom and gloom as we've looked at ACA, the Affordable Care Act, and what the implications of that would be on these new plans. We knew that we couldn't keep all of the kind of Cadillac, they call them, features of our current plans. When the new plans came out, I was fairly surprised to see that they're not drastically different from what we currently have. Some of the big, or bigger changes, the out-of-pocket maximum has increased from $1,500 to $5,600. The, some of the co-pays have changed slightly. The cost of the plan is down slightly for a family plan. There also is a new plan with a single-parent family as well, which could be beneficial. There's not, there's no longer coverage, complete coverage for ambulance and emergency room as well. So there's, there are some slight changes, but overall, and Rick, if you want to talk to this as well. You're good?
You're good.
Okay. We talked about this in negotiations. I would say overall, there's not a significant difference between the two plans in terms of what we have now and where we're headed. So that was, I think, really good news going into negotiations and into a new contract as a unified district. So that was, I think, a real positive.
So those out-of-pocket maximums you're talking about, do those currently exist in the top plan that are offered?
Yep. The benefit of the change now is that the out-of-pocket max is higher, but for some of the co-pays and coinsurance, currently, they go on indefinitely, so they don't count towards your out-of-pocket maximum, whereas with the $5,600, all of those, all of that coinsurance and co-pay amount goes towards that out-of-pocket maximum. So that's one benefit of the new higher number. ACSD development. So we're still, we still don't exist as a district yet, so I'm very conflicted when I'm writing my communique and, you know, what do I call us or not, or now I'm kind of going ACSU slash ACSD, but we are still waiting to become ACSD. The organizational meeting is hopefully approaching. We have not heard back. I've gotten emails in to the state asking for a date, and some people are on vacation until, I think, next week, so we don't have a date yet. Rutland South has a date, and Rutland Northeast has a date. Those are the two that are going operational July 1 of this year. And because we have an entire year, they are, and they stated this earlier, that we have a little bit more time.
I think Rutland Northeast has already had their organizational meeting.
This week maybe, or last week?
Last week.
Okay. Yeah. Can you push this faster for us?
All I heard Rebecca Holcomb is not the person who ran the meeting, so she can appoint somebody to run the meeting, so.
Yeah. We're not going to settle for anyone but her. Pass that along.
Okay.
So that's coming. Expectation is late May or so, and we will find out soon. We did pass our 30-day window for people bringing forward a revote, which means we're, it's now official. I got a communication from John Flowers yesterday asking for a quick comment now that it's official. So, we are entering into a new era, and I'm really, really excited about what we're working on, where we're going. I think the transition is going to be a really interesting process. I think it's going to be challenging in some ways as we go from all these separate budgets and the cultures that surround those separate budgets, and we move into one budget. But I think, you know, as I mentioned to John today, that we have the, we've already shown that we have the ability to work together across all of our different towns and all of our schools to get to where we are now. And I see great things coming in terms of all the work that we're doing, both within our schools, at the board level, and in our communities, to really become a one community that's working for the betterment of all kids. So it's really, I think it's really, really exciting. This is a great time to be in ACSD. Does anyone agree?
Amen.
Yeah?
Two thumbs up.
Okay. Good. Good. So there are many things that we'll be doing in this transitional plan, so there are a lot of things that we need to have our eyes on over the next probably three months, and then as the new board comes into being, looking at the three things that I mentioned in our carousel meeting, which is budget, negotiations, and policy. I think there's going to be a lot of work in kind of figuring out how we, you know, how fast the transition happens, who does what, our meeting structure and what that looks like as we move into next year. So lots of unknowns, and I think it's great that we have enough time to do the transition and to do it well, and not to have to rush like some others are doing right now. So I think we're in a good place.
Peter, if we're not going to be constituted until the end of May, does that have any impact on the fact that negotiations are going to open early next year? Is that going to put us behind?
No, we'll be constituted this May.
Right.
And so negotiations will be happening soon thereafter.
Okay.
With that, with the new district, and we're not sure yet in terms of the association. We currently have three associations.
Mm-hmm.
And they exist out of the fact that we have separate districts with different governing bodies. Now that we have one governing body, there's the potential that we'll have one association as opposed to three.
So that new team that we're going to be constituting out of the ACSD board is going to have to hit the ground running pretty much?
Yes.
Okay.
But they're benefiting from the work of the current Negotiations Council, who is doing a lot of work to pass the baton, or ball, or whatever. That would be more of a ball than a baton, so. Other questions about the transition?
I think it'd be important that, and I'm sure you will, stay in contact with the folks from the two districts that are going operational immediately, just to kind of, they're going to obviously come across the legal questions quicker than we will, and some of the stumbling blocks.
Yep. And I already, I already actually have many of those, because they've had to go through all the legal work now, and it's work that we'll have to do over the next year before we become operational on July 1, 2017. Other questions about the ACSD development? So International Baccalaureate feasibility study, I included two items in your packet. One was a brief article or publication from IB on what is an IB education, which I think is a good background to just start to get a sense of the philosophy of IB. It doesn't really get into a lot of detail, but I think it gives a good kind of broad, high-altitude view of IB and what it's about. As you know, we've been spent, we've spent this entire year working, we have three group, three work groups that are engaged in studying the primary years program, which is pre-K through 5 or 6, the middle years program, which is grades 6 or 7 through 10, and then the diploma program, which is grades 11 and 12. As part of this process, we're looking at decision and really engaging the entire community. So right now, we're at the point of looking at our feasibility study, which is the last page of the handbook in your packet. That outlines what we're going to be covering and the final document that we're going to be presenting to make sure that we've looked at every aspect of International Baccalaureate, and we've looked at ourselves in the process to determine whether it's a good fit. So a big part of that feasibility study is the gap analysis of who are we, where do we want to go, what does IB bring, what is the cost, what is the, what is the impact, and then finally, what is the support, both staff support, community support, student support. So that's, that process is moving forward, and we're looking at the end of September, early October, to finish that feasibility study. We haven't yet determined, in terms of the ACSD board, what that process will be in terms of bringing that information to the board, but I think a decision of this magnitude should involve the board, and so that's something that we'll, we'll talk about, I think, when that board is an actual entity. So there's lots of work happening in our schools right now, in faculty meetings. We have groups going from all of our schools to conferences. We have also done two site visits, and I don't know if the two of you want to share a little bit about site, just kind of an overview of your site visit and your group?
Sure. So the middle years program, Kathy and I are both co-facilitating that, and Scott's going to soon be joining us as facilitators, so. So the middle school representatives on the NYPD group went on a different site visit than the high school representatives on the NYPD group, to see the middle years program in a middle school setting versus in a high school setting, to see just sort of what the nuances there in those different environments. The middle school group went to the middle school of the Kennebunk's in Kennebunk, Maine. It's a 6, 7, 8 middle school. Their team structure is very similar to ours. Demographics are similar. They're a little bit bigger, they're a little over 500 students, but that's at a 6, 7, 8, whereas we would be just under 400 if we were 6, 7, 8. So fairly comparable there. It was really, it was a really, really worthwhile experience for us to go and see a school. They've been an NYPD school for eight years now, so they, they still haven't figured everything out. Like, that was reassuring, I think, to some teachers to know, like, year one of being an IB school, we don't have to have it all perfect. It takes some time, and we can develop these things at a reasonable pace and not have to have it ready to go out of the gate. But the, listening to the teachers and hearing it, I think the middle school folks were pretty excited about what could be at Mums. I think also happy to see that it's not this dramatically different thing from what's currently happening now. Like, it made it feel like this is really something we can do. It was a really, really positive, worthwhile day plus for us to go up and check that out. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Scott?
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was eye-opening for us, because we had talked about IB, we had read about IB, but to actually see it in action was quite an experience. And, I mean, the way I explained it to the group as we were processing the other day, the major difference that I saw is just a increase of student-centered instruction and a lack of teacher-focused, teacher-centered instruction. I told, you know, the group, the thing that sort of caught me was I saw the back of students' heads more than I saw the front of them. As we went into classrooms, we just saw students engage together in small groups and really independent in their learning, and it was, yeah, it was refreshing. It was really just a great experience for all of us who traveled up there.
So, the high school, Kathy and I took 13 teachers down to Hyannis, Massachusetts, to the Sturgis, which is a public charter school. It's actually two 9 through 12 high schools, 480 students apiece, but publicly funded. And we were able to, each of us spent a day in each school, and we swapped, so we got to see a lot. Teachers became very excited as a result of that visit, came back and reported to the faculty meeting, full faculty meeting, upon sort of reflecting on that experience, and it was quite a large amount of excitement generated. That school has a DP program, which is the upper-level program, 11, grades 11 and 12. They did something they called sort of a pre-IB or pre-DP program with 9 and 10, so what remains for us is to really look at the NYPD program in a 9th and 10th grade setting, and I think we're going to a conference in May to try and learn a whole lot more about the NYPD and implementing the NYPD in the high school setting. Want to add to that?
No, I think the most striking thing for all of us was the school culture at Sturgis, both schools, in terms of how focused the students were, how engaged, and also the collaboration among the faculty, how, you know, professional they were and how engaged. I think the also, the nice thing was for us to be really appreciative about what a wonderful school we have here in terms of our students and our staff and our facility. It's always interesting to visit another school and then to come back and be proud of what we have here.
And as an addendum, we, I actually struck up a great relationship with the, with the principal of one of those two schools, and he came up here and spent two days visiting our school to take a look at this school and sort of help us think about certain aspects of the program, and that was extremely rewarding in terms of helping us think about the implementation stage.
Is this really the focus of the professional development opportunities, kind of for the next year? Could be focused on IB?
Really, the two things we've been working on are the articulated curriculum, which is essential learning outcomes, which kind of coexist with IB. I mean, they, IB is a framework. It doesn't say, these are the things you're going to teach. The diploma program in some ways has a little bit more of a clearer curricula, or clearer curricula, but the IB programs as a whole are more of a framework around which you design teaching and learning. So the essential learning outcomes we're working on would be housed within that framework. So these are the learning targets, the learning outcomes that we expect all students to at least be proficient in, which lead up to our proficiency-based graduation requirements, which is work we'll be doing, I think, with the new board in drafting policy that reflects that state requirement. The IB work is moving to October for the final decision. If we, if the decision is to move forward, then that work will continue for a number of years. I mean, it continues, add in for an item, but it continues in terms of preparing, training, and entering an official authorization phase, which is usually two to three years. And so you're, what you're doing during that time is different depending on which program it is. In the primary years program, you are starting to design some of these units of inquiry, and that happens in the middle years program as well. In the diploma program, I think in the first year, you're more working on developing curricula and design, and then implementation happens the year after. And then finally, you're authorized by International Baccalaureate to be an International Baccalaureate school. So it's not a given, and I think part of the, the design of this authorization phase is to really make sure that when a school is looking at IB, one, it's a good fit from both sides, and that the depth is there. So you actually work with a consultant from International Baccalaureate who works with your school or schools to help you through that authorization process.
Further questions or comments on the IB? Yes.
So this is for the entire student body, not a segment thereof? Or it would be an option people elect? Can you opt out of the IB?
At what level?
At high school, sir?
So, the, the design of the different programs, the primary years and middle years program, which is pre-K through 10, are for everyone, so there's no differentiation that happens. Generally, diploma program, 11 and 12, and this is something that I think Bill and his team are still looking at in terms of what, you know, where would, what things would be for all and what things wouldn't be for all. In general, those courses are open and offered to everyone, but not necessarily everyone takes them. There are schools that have IB English for all or other courses, so that's, that's a potential too, to have some courses that all students take, and then some differentiation where a student could take other courses outside of International Baccalaureate, diploma courses.
Students take that course so they have a better understanding of how to learn.
But not all MUHS graduates would necessarily take the IB exam at the end of their high school?
Or get a DP diploma.
By subject.
Yeah. It's by subject.
By subject. Oh. Yeah. Like, you choose them.
There's a composite. There's a composite. To get, to receive your diploma, you have to have a certain number of points. So you get a certain score for each subject area, you get a certain score for your extended essay, and then, you know, you add all those numbers up, and there's a minimum number to receive the diploma.
And there are other requirements as well. There's a large paper project that needs to be done in order to get the DP diploma. There's a sort of service action program that people have to participate in, so there are some other aspects as well. But again, they're all sort of good fits with some of the things that we're already doing, so.
So if this went as quickly as it could, the, it would be four years before, it would be basically everywhere in the district?
I think it could be three. The potential is three.
Is this the kind of thing where you sort of start high and work your way down, or just kind of say?
This is just Bill and I's conversation about this. It could be done anyway. I mean, you could start at the PYP level and go up, down, or you could start everyone at the same time. It's not, the design of it is not such that you need, someone needs to be in a kindergarten program to be ready for the first-grade program for the second. So I think right now, we're looking at it as it would happen at one time. We wouldn't keep, you know, one school back and move all the other schools forward, that we would, we would move together, is, I think, our, our plan right now.
Peter, coming from Cornwall, you'll enjoy this. So when I went to the conference in New York and I asked that question of Robin Calitri, who was the nephew to?
Junius.
Junius. He looked right back at me and said, so let me get this straight. What you're asking is if they started implementing it at the primary grades, you'll be retired by the time it gets?
Any further questions?
I was just going to add something too. It's kind of, it goes with, a lot with IEPs too, because, I mean, if you're trying to get the IB diploma, you pretty much have to plan, I mean, if you're going to go for the whole diploma in like end of 8th grade, 9th grade, you kind of have to chart out a course to make sure that you do all the prerequisites and that you do it, which I guess goes along with a lot of the starting earlier and making sure our kids are getting advice from 8th to 9th and all the way up, and it makes, it sort of forces you to forecast. And it makes, it sort of forces you to forecast. Not every student who like says they're going to do the diploma ends up doing it, but at least they think about it. And, you know, if you encourage a lot of kids to try it, at least they have the prereqs and they can, you know, always scale down, you know, later. But it's good overall because it kind of fits into that whole plan.
All right. Would you mind also updating the board as to the status and process in the middle school principal?
Sure.
Replacement.
So we met, are committing that yesterday, and we have a number of teachers from the middle school, and me, Vicki, and Peter is also on that as well.
This is Scott.
And Scott. Thank you. And we, we kind of talked about qualities and, and experience that we're looking for in a candidate. We have about a week to review applications. We have a number of applications, and we're, we're hopeful that there's a strong candidate in there. We are getting back together on the 14th, where we'll, we'll all have had time to look at those applications and we'll get a sense of who our pool is, who we want to bring forward. I did, I did mention this yesterday, and I mentioned it previously in an email, that if we do get to the point in this process where we feel like we're not seeing any strong candidates, and I think our expectations are quite high, thanks a lot. Tried to help out a little bit last night. But our expectations are, are high, and so if we don't find a suitable candidate, we're, we're then going to look at an interim for a year and, and repost early in the following year. So that's our, that's our plan.
And the, the application closing date, is that this Friday? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, let's move on to dealing with a bunch of policies. I guess we'll, we'll follow Robert's rules here pretty closely. And the first policy, let's move it and second it, and then we'll have a conversation.
I move we adopt policy FFA, naming of district facilities.
Jerry, second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. All right. So this, unlike almost all the policies we've been dealing with up to now, is actually generated here. It's not based on a VSBA requirement or legislative requirement. And Jerry, would you mind just kind of giving us the highlights?
This draft was taken from a number of different school district policies that I looked at. And the committee, well, that wasn't the committee, we bypassed the committee this time. And so the policy, I'm turning several pages here to get to the draft, covers all types of facilities that belong to the school district and just gives the prerogative for naming facilities to the board. Anyone can come forward and propose a name for a school district facility, and it's up to the board. Oh, thank you, I'm almost there. And then it's up to the board. We're talking about this informally before the meeting. It's possible to imagine a case where someone comes in and suggests the name, to name some very small thing, you know, a tree, a flagpole, and the school district, the school board might consider that unworthy of having a name, just something that's too small to have a name and would decline to, to name something. On the other hand, you can imagine a flagpole or a tree to be a memorial for someone where it is appropriate. So it leaves the latitude to the school board to, to name things. There are, there's a small number of guidelines included as well.
I found the guidelines to be very helpful. I do have a question. So like guideline A says buildings will not be named for a person until at least one year after the death of that person. That speaks, will not be named, but it's a guideline, correct?
Right.
And?
That is fairly common, too.
Yeah, I think it's a very good thing to have, but I just wish, between guideline and will not.
Right. So you can picture that it might be a discussion of interpretation, because it says will not, but at the same time, it's only a guideline.
Does anybody have any questions about this policy? Did you all get a chance to take a look at it, weigh in on it? All right, great. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Does anybody want to abstain? We now have a policy, and I suspect we will be very soon approached with a, a proposal. Leonard's going to get a procedure. All right. Okay. So now we just are reviewing two to adopt, one to adopt, one to amend. Jerry, why don't you?
Sure. So the next one on the list, JFJC, prevention of harassment, hazing, and bullying of students. Currently, this board has three separate policies, one on harassment, one on hazing, and one on bullying. The Agency of Education has rolled out a model, a single model, to cover all three of these. The little note here notes that it replaces two of them, that it should include hazing as well. This was adopted by the ACSU board recently, and so we'll be eligible to adopt this one next time. And after we have done that, we can rescind the other three because it replaces them. I did see something from the legislature that, if I remember correctly, that they're looking to retool the entire bullying situation through legislation once again. So we, the other, the, the new board may be doing this again. The next one, GBCD, harassment of employees. The draft that was included in the packet is the wrong draft. I realized to my chagrin this afternoon. I was sure of it once we got to the list of reporting people and it said Gail Conley, superintendent. So, and then I followed up by looking at the website to see, I know that the new policy, which is based on a change in the VSBA model, was adopted by ACSU on January 5th, but the new policy language was never posted on the ACSU website. So I will follow that up, and I'll make sure that at our next meeting you have the correct draft in front of you. So that will have to go one more. The final two, ACSU concurred with the policy committee by thinking that these two policies are unnecessary. Student conduct and communicable diseases are handled by staff. There are superintendent guidelines, and we felt that rather than try to update these and take ownership by the boards, it was better just to rescind them. So that's the recommendation of the ACSU board.
And the policy committee?
And before that, the policy committee, yes.
So that was just for review?
All of those are just for review, yes.
Okay, what's the, what's the reasoning for the communicable diseases rescinding that policy?
Well, the same as student conduct that left to the staff, and we saw no reason for the board to take ownership, that neither one is required.
Questions about any of those policies?
Procedural question. Jerry mentions a third policy that would be rescinded with the adoption of JFJC. That's not in our agenda. Can we add that to the minutes and be good, or do we have to warn that?
Those are separate, right, Jerry?
Those are separate, yes. The, the policy JFJC would be up for adoption at the next meeting, and then subsequent to that, we can talk about rescinding the policies that it replaces. So it's just there for informational purposes, that it replaces, and as I said, at list two, there should be a third one, the policy on hazing.
What's that called?
I don't know the letters. I can get it to you.
JFCF.
Thank you.
Jerry, the definition section of student conduct and discipline, is that information on another policy somewhere? Defining what a weapon, you know, knife, things like that?
There is a separate policy that is a required policy that we still have on, I think it's, the title is dangerous weapons in school.
So there's something else that defines that somewhere?
Yeah, that's.
That's also staged. Yeah, that's also staged.
Right.
Robert?
Yeah, so I have a question about section three.
Which policy?
Of the harassment policy. Prevention of harassment. I'm just, I'm not.
Employee one? C, G, GBCD?
JFJC.
JFJC, okay.
I just, I don't think that section three is consistent. I'm not sure that is really the intent of this policy to be consistent with the student's right to free expression in the First Amendment.
JFJC.
That policy sentence necessary to be in there, because I don't think the policy does that.
The Constitution.
So I'm at JFJC, section three, constitutionality protected speech. That's really not what we're doing.
What do you mean by we're not doing?
Well, I don't think we're, we are prohibiting speech. I mean, we're not protecting the First Amendment of the Constitution. I mean, nor do we have to. I don't.
I think we're, the purpose of the, I think what it's saying is that the policy's prohibiting conduct on, with protected class.
Right. I agree with that, but that's not the, I mean, the Constitution, First Amendment prevents the government from abridging my right to ridicule, humiliate. I can ridicule.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a non sequitur in a way, in that, in how it's written. This is, this is directly from the state, and this came out of the AOE. I mean, Jerry mentioned the legislature was meddling again with this policy, which took a long time to write, which is why I laughed, because the write-up from that was the AOE and VSA and VSBA are trying to stop the legislature from meddling with this because we're just starting to implement it now, and we need time to, to develop it. My, my sense of this paragraph is, the first sentence is saying, the purpose of this policy is not to overrule to the First Amendment. The purpose of this policy is the following, to do, to, to, to do something about, about harassment against protected class. So I think it's just how that paragraph is written is a little wonky. That, that's how I read that.
Yeah, I would say some of the things that are prohibited under this policy are, are speech. And so whenever you are putting limits on what can be said, it raises a constitutional issue. That's, that's how I read it. So this paragraph addresses that, saying that, yes, there is such a thing as right to free expression under the First Amendment, however, there are certain things that are prohibited.
Yeah, that's not what it says, and I, and I don't think those, these two things are.
Yeah. I see your point.
If you take out the first, if you take out the sentence about the Constitution, then I'm.
You know, you know how I read this? I see your point. I totally see your point, but I read this as, you know, you have the right to free speech. So if you say something intimidating once, you know, we're not going to come down on you, but if there's a pattern of behavior, you know, which is what bullying consists in, then we will. So it's a way of balancing the two.
Yeah.
Not going to be censored for saying something stupid.
I don't, I don't see that at all. I mean, what we're saying is, and there's something very different between, we are restricting speech, which I, which I am fine with. I don't know, I mean, it's probably a legal question. We're not bound by the First Amendment as a school.
In certain cases, we are.
But, you know.
It's a public institution.
For instance, if we use the, I, I just don't think that, I mean, if this was a political paragraph, we, we don't have to keep the discussion going. I'm just not reading that those, these two things are consistent.
Middlebury is a private institution, is subject to a different set of rules than a public institution. That's another way to think of it.
Basically, what you're saying is that the first sentence is in opposition to the next sentence.
Yes. And I, yes.
Yeah, and I think that's intentional.
The government, you know, the, the government could not infringe on my right, you know, bad, bad example, but to carry the stars and bars, for instance. But as a school, we are. So those two things are, are different.
It's missing a transition sentence.
Or just get rid of that part about the Constitution, because we're not, it's, but again, if this is from the state, and I'm sure it was political, but I'm saying that I think those two things are.
Exactly. They are. I, I think court decisions have, have shown that there is, that the right to free speech is not unlimited in this country. There are certain types of speech that can be prohibited under law. I mean, the, the example that always gets trotted out is you can't yell fire in a crowded theater when there is no fire. That doesn't come under the protection of free speech. And there are certain protected classes of people that are protected under this policy. So you're right, there's competition between these two things, protecting classes of people from harassment and free speech, and the two are opposed to each other. But this paragraph attempts to sort that out, and saying that in general, this school district, like all institutions under the US Congress, the US Constitution, must grant free speech with some exceptions. And this policy lays out those exceptions.
Exceptions to the First Amendment?
Exactly.
Do you want to add anything?
Well, no, I think Jerry just summed it up very adequately.
I think if the word however was in there, you'd probably be even more comfortable with it.
I'm not that uncomfortable with it, it just seems very inconsistent.
I agree. All right, so we will adopt these in our next, we have to review one more time.
We can adopt these at the next meeting with the exception of that one, GBCD, which.
I just copied you on an email.
Okay, thanks. We'll get that right next time.
All right, well, this is good timing, as there's a meeting at seven that our administrators want to get to. Do we have any other business that people would like to talk about? And actually, we kind of skipped over reports of the board, and I don't know if the Facilities Committee has met or other committees. Nutrition?
Not a board committee.
That's just that last, my last conversation.
What committee is that?
I'm glad I heard you mention it at one point in time that you guys had actually met. Anyway, all right, well, if nothing else, then we are at the.
I move adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks very much, everybody.